Good afternoon. Before I get started, I'd like to just lay out a couple of ground rules. And we'd like to see if we can please ask that you place your phones on vibrate or silent, please, out of courtesy. And if you come up on call to the public, please state your name and your address for the record. With that said, Raoul, how are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm calling this meeting to order, and can you lead us in the pledge, sir?
Yes. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then for the record, call the order of this meeting dating October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. And we'll move on to item B, adoption of the agenda. Mr. Manager, good afternoon.
Mr. Chair, there's no changes to the agenda.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt the agenda and allow Chair to deviate as needed.
I'll move second.
A motion of the second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item C, call to the public. Okay, our first one is Xander. I'm having trouble with the last name. Alt, Alt is it?
My name is Xander Alt, and I'm from sixty, or I live at sixty-two Red Rock Drive in Patagonia. Supervisors, thanks for having me, leadership. I'm here today as a representative of Patagonia's nonprofit conservation and outdoor recreation communities, organizations working every day to preserve the wild places, biodiversity, and open spaces that define southern Arizona's Sky Island region. Our missions vary, from trail stewardship to wildlife protection to community education, but our purpose is shared, to ensure that the lands, waters, and cultural landscapes of this region remain healthy, accessible, and thriving for future generations. Today, our work faces unprecedented pressure, the growth of the resource extraction industry, increasing rural development, and climate-related stress on already fragile ecosystems threaten to undo decades of thoughtful stewardship and collaboration. At the same time, we see tremendous opportunity. The rise of sustainable tourism, outdoor recreation, and conservation-driven community planning has created a model for economic resiliency, one rooted in protecting the very landscapes that make this region special. But this model only succeeds when local government stands beside us. We urge our county supervisors and our civic leaders to, one, show up, attend local events, fundraisers, and public forums that support conservation, outdoor recreation, and community planning. Your presence matters. It signals that protecting our public lands and cultural heritage is a shared and county-wide priority. Two, collaborate openly. Engage with the nonprofit and recreation sectors to identify shared goals, funding opportunities, and proactive policies that strengthen the long-term health of our lands and local economy. And three, champion environmental leadership. Use your platform to advocate for balanced, responsible growth that protects the biodiversity, wildlife corridors, and public access that define life in the Sky Islands. The future of our rural communities depends on this partnership between nonprofits, businesses, residents, and elected officials, working together toward one clear goal, a thriving, resilient Patagonia region where conservation and community coexist. So I invite you to stand with us, show up, speak out, and protect what makes this place home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Xander.
Thank you, Xander.
Very close. Okay, perfect. Okay, during the hearing. Okay, Patricia Glawoski. Okay, we'll do it during the public meeting then. And Sue, is yours the same?
Yes.
Okay. Keith? Okay, we'll go ahead and have those wait till the public hearing. Anyone else wishing to come up on call to the public? Yes, sir. If you can come up here and state your name for the record.
Or same topic.
Is it the same topic?
I'm trying to do that.
Yeah. Why don't you wait for the public hearing then?
Okay.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay, at this time, we'll go ahead and move on to current events. Vice Chairman?
Sure.
Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. Thanks, everyone, for being here. Regarding what Xander talked about, one of the things I have on my list is that we are meeting bi-weekly with the Fisher Border Wall regarding the border wall, and they're the folks that are building the next twenty miles into Santa Cruz County and seven miles into Cochise County. During our last meeting, I did discuss the need for wildlife crossing areas, so I think that fits within what you were speaking of today. I will continue to push not only Fisher but also CBP to make sure that our animals are able to move freely. I know that's difficult, especially for the large ones, but I will continue. Port Authority twentieth anniversary, I was at. Josh, look forward to hearing from what you have to say today, it was a wonderful event. I was part of the Saint Andrews Clinic and the Tubac Rotary, along with some other rotarians from throughout the state volunteering in Hermosillo for cleft palate surgeries with some of the folks from throughout Mexico. Some of them travel thirty hours by bus to be there and talk about a life-altering experience. If you ever have the chance to do that, please do so. Just ask me, and I can put you into contact with those folks that can make that happen. Community wildfire protection plan, I was able to be part of the Rio Rico Venture, and I want to thank Dave for putting that together. I had my first Elgin community check-in. It was about twelve, fifteen people showed up. I want to thank both Jesus and Mauricio for being there. Lot of good questions, we were able to answer most of them, some of them not with the answers they wanted to hear, but it was a good lively discussion. And let's see, Red Cross, we met with the Red Cross recently, trying to create a real tight bond with the Red Cross and all they do throughout the country. And lastly, just on a personal note, I want to, I don't know if I've done this before, but if not, I'm going to do it now, if I have, then it's going to, people are going to hear it again. My brother is being inducted into the Pima County Sports Hall of Fame, so I'm very proud.
Oh, wow, congratulations. Okay. Supervisor Dr. Davis.
Hello, so. First of all, the Port Authority invited me for this panel, they brought in about nine journalists, and they were from all over the world. And I heard that application was out of five hundred people, and the idea was to come so they could see the border and have just more information, so when they go out and do their work, they were going to travel all over, so it was really nice to be part of that panel. I also met with Mr. Matthew Earl Jones, I'll talk, he's part of the Film in Arizona Film Commission, I'll talk a little bit about it a little bit later. Also, I want to thank Animal Control, I forgot to mention this last time, so I called Mr. Chavez because I was driving and they ran over a deer. So I called them, and they, and I passed through that area again, like, within an hour, and they took care of it, it's, so that was really good, that respond. Also, somebody in the community contacted me because they wanted to return one thousand seven hundred and ninety-one dollars with eighty-one cents. This person had done a contract with Liz Godfar, and the job was never concluded, so he felt that he wanted to do, return that money, even though it's not a lot, I really appreciate the action. I want to thank Mr. May, everybody in the county, the receivership that helped with that process, so I know that they already received that money, which is something really, really good. I was able to attend to this semiconductor summit up in Phoenix, the county manager, the deputy county manager, we all attended. It was really, they provided a lot of good information, there were people from Chihuahua, Baja California, Sonora, trying to attract the semiconductors, so we went, it was a good learning experience, and, I mean, we're just trying to see if there's a place for Santa Cruz County. Lastly, my brother-in-law passed away yesterday, so I want to give my condolences to my nephews, Mariana Casillas and Martin Casillas, and all the family. And that's basically all for me.
Sorry for your loss. And Mr. Fanning, sorry for your loss, too, you lost a relative as well. Thank you, sir. I, we've been having some busy weeks here. First and foremost, my, I met with this young lady that I believe she's a freshman at Nogales High School, she's part of the U of A Emerging Leaders, and they formed a group, and part of their goal is to take a project and finish it out at the end of the year. And their initial project was a biking lane from Grand Avenue all the way to Little Red Schoolhouse. And we met with the whole group, and Shannon, Jesus, myself, and luckily, Jesus has a lot of experience through his public works, job in engineering. It's a real complex job that she's looking at, so we kind of geared her and the group in a different direction, and we'll be meeting with them on a maybe monthly basis, just to see how that project goes, or what kind of project we're going to come up with. I, too, met with Artis and Courtney with the Red Cross alongside with Sobeida from our emergency management, I think those two connect really well, and it was important that they meet, because if we do have an emergency, Red, and we do need Red Cross, they want to make sure we have everything in place. And so it's a great partnership, and I want to thank Artis and Courtney for meeting with us all. Emergency Management, I also attended the planning, the, Emergency Management is coming up with a Santa Cruz County Protection Plan, and part of the process right now is to go and host public meetings, and come up with a project, and plan, and bring it to the board, and then we're going to go ahead and approve it. And I want to thank Sobe for working on that project, and all involved. Today, we went to the WIA organized Job Fair, and it was a wonderful event, Serena did a good job, her staff. Santa Cruz County was super well-represented, our sheriffs were there, our recorders, our assessors, pretty much everyone was represented, and it was good to see. Also, Port Authority celebrated the twentieth annual anniversary, thank you, thank you for what you do, and congratulations. Lastly, Supervisor Davis, having the background in movie, being involved with the movies, took Mauricio and I across the border this afternoon, and we got to meet Cheech Marin from Cheech and Chong, and the wonderful thing about that experience was their film crew, the director, the producers, were all super friendly, and they, it seems like they brought us into their family, and I never expected that, because you, you see movie crews, and I've been around movie crews before, and they can be kind of snobby. They were super nice, they stopped production so we could take pictures, just for us, so we could take pictures with Cheech. So that was, that was awesome, great experience, thank you, thank you for inviting us. And that's all I have to report.
I forgot to say something really quick. So I, we also met with Mayor Jim from Nogales, Sonora, Mauricio and Jesus, so it was just an introduction meeting. We plan to go again with the agenda, we're going to try to come up with a plan, because Nogales, Arizona, and Nogales, Sonora, they're connected in a lot of different ways, and my district covers right from the airport all the way to the border, so that's going to continue, so that was, it was also like a really good meeting with Mayor Jim.
Great, thank you. And one other thing is, one of the good things about this Job Fair is I got to see former students of mine that are now doing super well in leadership positions, and that is always great, we love to see that, as former educators, that's always a plus for us, to see our youth doing well, that's awesome. We really, really enjoy seeing that. And that's all I have, Mr. Manager, good afternoon, sir, again.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, three items to report. Tax, the tax bills went out last month. There, the county and some of you guys have been receiving emails and phone calls regarding the tax increase that occurred in District Twenty-eight, which is Santa Cruz Elementary, District Number Twenty-eight. Mauricio has reached out to Maya Donley, our school superintendent, and she's making contact with the school district, so that we could provide more information to her constituents. If anybody has a question regarding that, they're still welcome to come and talk to us, and we'll help them out as best we can, but we, you know, we want to really point them to the right organization where they could get all their questions answered.
Thank you.
I just want to bring that to your attention. Secondly, ADQ and EMEEP, which is an organization in Sonora, what they did is they mapped their watershed to what I would consider standards that we use in the United States, so when we compared and contrast what they came up with and what we have done with our watersheds, very similar. The discussions, they're looking at, looking at building infrastructure in Sonora so they could prevent some of the flooding that occurs. To get a little bit technical, the hope is that they could, when you get a flood event, what happens is, there's a, there's a time of concentration, they call it, where it's how long it takes for the water to, for an event to basically flood the roads, that's a very important time. They, they're looking at to see how do you, how do you attenuate that time, so instead of all coming in in ten minutes, maybe it prolonged for half an hour to an hour, that gives enough people, that gives time for people to get out of the way, it helps us a lot. So we're excited to work with them, we could support them technically, and maybe along the road, something that we can invest if we're able to. But it's good, and the reason I think the county is interested in that, for us to build a significant structure is, would be ten times more costly than if somebody, if a structure were to be built in Sonora. So that's why we want to participate, which that kind of prompted the discussion with the mayor, the mayor of Sonora, where we're talking about forming a bi-national committee that with the help of some of the, some of the, like, Nat Bank, some of, Nat Bank and ADQ and EPA, to see if we could, if we could concentrate on infrastructure, on solid waste, on wastewater, and just overall water quality. So that's all I have for you, thank you.
Thank you. Questions, gentlemen? No? Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to item E, Department Reports and Activities. Item one, Finance, Cash, and Investments, Expenditures, and Revenue Reports. Mr. Chavez?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and members of the public. The Cash and Investment Report, the general fund has an overall balance of seventeen million eight hundred forty-three thousand two hundred and eighty-five, with an investment amount of sixteen million five hundred and one thousand three hundred and sixty-nine. Road Fund has an overall balance of six million two hundred seventeen thousand eight hundred and one, with an investment amount of five million one hundred and three thousand nine hundred and thirty-three. The Flood Control District Fund has an overall balance of two million four hundred eleven thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight, with an investment amount of three hundred seven thousand six hundred. And then our Jail District Fund has an overall balance of six million five hundred sixty-three thousand six hundred and ninety, with an investment amount of four million three hundred eighty-four thousand seventy-nine. For a total for all funds, fifty-five million two hundred fifty-eight thousand five hundred and ten, an investment amount of twenty-eight million four hundred ten thousand two hundred and twelve. We have an estimated end-of-the-month balance of seven million six hundred forty-two thousand four hundred and twenty-eight.
Any questions, gentlemen?
No.
Mr. Chairman, I also wanted to provide members of the board an update on the government shutdown, you know, that it, of course, it affects the county, as we have a lot of federally-funded programs, it's ended fifteenth day today. We don't have any other news as to any type of agreement that both sides have had. We've been requesting from our funding, individual funding agencies, though, we've reached out, and the fundings that we have, our contracts that we have, our appropriations from last year. So those fundings, that money is secure for us, the only issue is some agencies may not have personnel that can help us with any technical assistance or anything like that, but the funding itself for our, for our programs that are FY twenty-five are secure. However, any type of future funding that might be in question with the government shutdown right now.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Questions, gentlemen? Any questions? Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to item two, any other departments wishing to report? Hmm, I don't see any other departments. Okay. Item three, Awards, Recognitions, and Accomplishments. A Raoul Garizad, alumnus of Rio Rico High School, and newly drafted baseball player to the Arizona Diamondbacks Major League Organizations. Vice Chairman?
Yes, sir. I think people, once they get to know Raoul, or as my wife calls him, Raolito, I think they're going to find out that although baseball may be his passion, the person that he is, in my opinion, far outshines his athletic talent and his baseball ability, he's just a great kid. So I'd like to have him come up, if you would, and tell us a little bit about your journey, how you got to where you are right now. On a side note, they were, my wife and I went to a U of A baseball game, and he was warming up down in the dugout, and sometimes I do things without thinking, quite often, and I told my wife that, hey, I'm going to go down and tell him happy birthday, probably something I should have let him concentrate on what he was doing, he was warming up, and I did, and once again, just the awesome character that this young man has, he recognized and said thank you, and continued his thing, so I, just, nothing but great things to say about this young man, so tell us a little bit about yourself and where you're at right now and how you got there.
Thank you, well, thank you guys for having me here. Santa Cruz County and Rio Rico especially means a lot to me, and I wouldn't be here with Mr. Fanning and a lot of the other staff and family, but my journey was very precious to me. It started up there in the top-left corner, watching the Arizona Diamondbacks with my Rio Rico All-Star jersey on, and that was just, it was a dream, and it was, it was just, it was something that me and my dad would always watch, baseball every night, especially the Diamondbacks, and we just took it day by day, through travel ball tournaments, and playing at Rio Rico Little League, onto the, the next picture to the right is me playing at the Nogales All-Star versus Rio Rico, it was just, it's always like a good thing around town, and just playing with people around, and honestly, I more cherish the relationships I've made throughout this whole journey. Every precious moment has meant more to me than this whole baseball career, but I'm just glad I keep getting to do what I love. To the right of that is me playing at Rio Rico High School, surrounded by great teachers, and my mom moved over and was supervising me, make sure I was, I was in line with what she wanted for me, and it's just, I'm just grateful for everything, Mrs. Fanning as well, helped me so much, and just everyone around was so helpful to this journey, and I cherished it as I moved on, and got the opportunity to play at South Mountain Community College down there in the left, and it really just made me appreciate family and how much And it really just made me appreciate family and how much this not only means to me, and obviously this career means a lot to me, but just to everyone in the Rio Rico area and the kids growing up. Like, I know they're looking up, and I know that it pushes me every day to continue to make sure that, like, this dream is possible, keep on dreaming, and nothing's impossible if you just take it one day at a time. And just thank God for everything that you are blessed with. So my freshman year, then trained a little bit in the Phoenix area, and then got the opportunity to play in my dream school at the University of Arizona. And I, bear down. I committed there because I wanted to, I knew that making a World Series there would mean not only the world to me, but to this community and people around. I know that when Arizona made the World Series, a couple of years before I made it to college, I was watching every game, and I was like, wow, it's just so cool that a little small comedian in Tucson can make it on such a big stage. So I committed there, and then the draft came along, and I decided to go to the University of Arizona and continue my dream there. And then my junior year didn't turn out as planned. I just, the performance wasn't there, but I cherished every single moment. I knew God put me there for a reason and to continue to just observe and cherish every single day, and this is all part of his plan. Then went on to my senior year. It was a cool role I got to be in, just like a leadership role with such an amount of talent and people around me, and I just cherished it. I thank God for every little part of it. And we ended up winning the Pac-12 my junior year, and my senior year, got to pitch in the Big 12 Tournament and did pretty well against West Virginia. We ended up winning it. There's me down there, making it one step closer to the championship. And then we made it all the way to the College World Series, which is why I committed to the University of Arizona. That, it was just amazing. It's something not a lot of people get to experience. My family got to come out. Yeah, it was amazing, just like, not only because you're on such a big stage, but you're just like, wow, there's so many hands in this whole journey, and there continues to be. And I just like, I'm just so grateful that I got to walk it and just take it all in. And then a few months or a little bit over a month later, I got a call to play for my dream team, the Arizona Diamondbacks. So it was, it's been great being able to play there and continue my career there, and hopefully we can bring some success to Arizona and to this community, and just continue to live for this journey and that God's put me on. And I just thank you all for everything. I thank the city or the town of Rio Rico. I thank everything, every relationship I've made, and I thank all the staff and all my family. Thank you, guys.
Like I said, now you understand what I'm talking about. You brought some folks with you today. Can you let us know who those folks are in the back?
So there's my dad to the left right there. There's my dad, my mom, Virginia, my sister Alexis, my girlfriend Olivia, my uncle back there, Eddie Castillo, his son over there, Michael, and his kids and his girlfriend as well. Oh, they're over there, but, yeah, they've been a part of everything. My mom was actually just telling me, she's like, they've been here for every little perfect attendance, for every award that I've ever gotten. So whenever I get an award, they also come with me, so it's been great. I have a cool support system.
Well, you've done some incredible things, and I'm sure you will continue. And I know I don't have to say this, but I'm going to remember the folks that got you there, you know? And it's a lot of hard work from you, but like you said during your presentation just now, there's a lot of people that helped along the way, especially your family. You've got a great family, so congratulations. And with that, I'd like to have you come on up here, if you would. And I want to, we call these challenge coins, and it's from the county. And we're going to challenge you to continue doing the great things. We're going to get a picture up here.
I'll put a challenge point. Do you want a picture with the challenge?
Yeah, let's get the picture with the challenge point.
We're challenging you to play in the World Series.
And thanks for all you do, Mom and Dad, Aunt Sister, and Girlfriend, and Theo.
Yeah, congratulations. That's really cool.
We're super proud. Okay. We'll go ahead and move on to item F, Study Session. Item F1, Update by the Greater Nogales Santa Cruz County Port Authority by Josh Rubin, Chairman of the Greater Nogales Santa Cruz Port Authority. Good afternoon, Josh.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. Good afternoon, Supervisors, and thank you for the opportunity to brief you on the Port Authority's recent works. The last few months have been busy, productive, and frankly pivotal for Nogales and Santa Cruz County. Every activity you hear of today ties back to our mission, to advocate, connect, and ensure Nogales remains a top-tier gateway for trade, investment, and opportunity. I broke it down into four different sections. I'll start off with the first one being strategic advocacy and national engagement. The first topic that I'd like to talk about is Union Pacific and the Norfolk Southern merger. We issued a formal letter of support to ensure Nogales and Santa Cruz County remains recognized as a corridor within the merger system, keeping our community in the national freight conversation. The next point, federal engagements. We met with both the U.S. and Mexican ambassadors, participated in roundtables with the Attorney General Chris Mays. Thank you to the three supervisors for participating in that. The topics was on trade and tariffs. We hosted six members of Congress from the Problem Solver Cocteau, which is a representative of equal Republicans and Democrats, led by Representative Juan Ciscomani. On global visibility, as mentioned here already, Nogales welcomed the World Press Institute delegation of journalists from nine countries, to include some where Argentina, Bolivia, Sweden. A powerful platform to reset the narrative about our border as a place for innovation and opportunity, not division. On cross-border partnership and infrastructure planning, the Santa Cruz Reliability Project by Unisource, we continue to activate, we continue active engagement with Unisource leadership. For example, the President and CEO of USN Services, Susan Gray, as well as Roberto Gavara, emphasizing how energy reliability underpins our competitiveness. We met, talk about a little, I want to talk about ADOT and the Transportation Board collaboration. We congratulate and continue to congratulate Mr. Bruce Bracker on his appointment to the Arizona Transportation Board. We met with ADOT's new Director of Multimodal Planning to align priorities around Ruby Road and Rio Rico Drive interchanges on 9/19. On Nogales Customs and Logistics and Integration, we held a work session with Noga MX, which is the operator of the Mariposa Corridor in Sonora, also known as El Libramiento MX-15, to synchronize infrastructure strategies on both sides of the port to include conversations of a possible future century. We met with the new Administrador de Alguanas. We welcomed and briefed a new Customs Administrator for Nogales Sonora, reaffirming our shared commitment to efficient and secure crossings. And another point I would like to add is we met with a company called Centro. They joined us at one of our last, recent Port Authority meetings, and they're bringing broadband from Queretaro all the way to Phoenix to have a connecting spot here in Nogales, Arizona, so that companies like Cox, MediaCom can connect and offer our community broadband. On regional and bi-national leadership, the Arizona Mexico Commission Summit, where you three gentlemen as well participated, our delegation participated in multiple sessions and closed-door meetings to include the Canadian Ambassador to Mexico, reinforcing our tri-national alignment on trade, infrastructure, and energy. We met with the CBC or the Canadian Arizona Business Council, and we formally became and joined the council to ensure Nogales's voice and Santa Cruz County's voice is present in the North American supply chain conversations. On trade monitoring and response, we're actively tracking tariff policy shifts, the New World Screwworm response and what's affecting our cattle crossings, as well as the U.S. withdrawal from the Tomato Suspension Agreement and changes in Mexican tax policies, all of which have direct implications on our regional economy. On governance and community engagement, new board members, we want to welcome and congratulate Councilwoman Anna Parrada, who represents now the city of Nogales, Gustavo Acosta, who now represents the U.S. Customs Brokers Association, taking place for Guillermo Valencia, and our newest member, Amy Taylor, from the Mariposa Community Health Center as our new ex-officio member. Both or all three as part of our continued leadership renewal and advocacy. On media and public outreach, we responded to multiple regional and national, regional, national, and international media requests. We had individuals of the Port Authority meet with BBC in Europe, using every opportunity, including nogalesport.org, our website, and social media platforms to tell the unified story of Nogales and Santa Cruz County means business. As mentioned here, we celebrated our 20th anniversary. Just a couple of weeks ago in Tubac, we hosted 120 stakeholders to reflect on the two decades of success, and more importantly, to chart our next 20 years. The message was clear. The Port Authority remains the voice of our region. On closing, I also, our board submits monthly reports to the county, but I wanted today to convey the larger picture. We're visible, we're credible, and we're driving outcomes that position our community as the most efficient, secure, and opportunity-rich part of the Southwest. Thank you for continued partnership and support if we, if what keeps this region moving forward. Thank you. Any questions?
Gentlemen, any questions?
No, I just want to say thank you, Josh. One of the most impactful portions was when, what, five or six?
Six.
Of the chair or the presidents that were part of the Port Authority, all of them were there. And just seeing where it was 20 years ago and where it's at now. And every single one of them has their fingerprint on the success, and you especially. Thank you so much for all that you've done for this region.
Thank you. I'll say what I said at the meeting. They made my life even harder, so, which is nice, though, which is great for our community. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
I've been fortunate to be a part, a partner of, you know, we have been a partner for at least 16 of my 17 years, and I really value what you do, and I thank you. And we've had great leadership, by the way.
Thank you.
Including yourself.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, moving on to item two for our study session. Santa Cruz County, Santa Cruz Growing Water Smart Workshop, presentation by Elisa Stokes. Hi, Elisa. Good afternoon.
Hi, good afternoon to the board, to the public. Thanks so much for having me. Just drove down from Tucson to join you all. So I'm here to talk about our Growing Water Smart program, which will be coming to southern Arizona with a workshop in the spring, talk about how it relates to Santa Cruz County, and then a little bit more about how to apply. And I'm just gonna, that's all it takes is to click. All right. So if you're not familiar, Sonoran Institute is an environmental organization, bi-national, with headquarters in both Tucson and Mehkali. We're focused on water quality and quantity issues in the bi-national Colorado River Basin. And we've held Growing Water Smart, which is a training and assistance program really focused on local-level leadership for municipalities and counties to build regional water resilience since 2017. We do this work coming out of a few understandings and goals. The first is that, of course, we have this growing supply and demand gap with water, both with surface water from the Colorado River, as well as diminishing groundwater supplies. The second is that, you know, while there are negotiations at the state and federal levels, there are actually a lot of local levers around water because localities have jurisdiction with land use planning, that many of which are not often used, and that water resources and land use planning historically have occurred separately, but there's so much overlap that it's a major opportunity to build longer-term community resilience. So a little more about our program. We have held 26 of these Growing Water Smart workshops to date in four states, as well as sister cities along the U.S.-Mexico border. That has reached over 1,000 participants, over 153 cities, towns, and counties. And then another aspect of our program is providing small technical assistance seed grants that help to fund an aspect of water resilience that's discussed and identified at the workshop. So we provide those as funding allows. In Arizona, we've held six workshops to date, and I just wanted to share this map here to kind of show the range of types of communities. So, you know, it's in, we're in the Phoenix Valley, but we're also working with very small rural communities like Globe in Miami. The goal is that our program is really unique and flexible to whatever your local needs might be, so that it can be a fit for all types of municipal communities. So what do we mean by water and land use integration? We think about some intervention points that historically exist in water resources and the way that communities grow at the development standpoint, largely looking at long-term plans, water supply, land use policy, watershed health, and then demand management. So I'm just going to go through these briefly. We go through them much more in-depth at the workshop itself. But with planning and policymaking, we're thinking about your long-term plans, your comprehensive plan, water plan, CIP, how these different plans are talking to each other, or if they're not, are there ways to make them more integrated? During development review, there are a few different opportunities around ensuring a really robust water supply, making sure that water is there in the way the community wants to see before investing in new growth. And then other opportunities where the rubber really hits the road with zoning and subdivision regulations, annexation policies, et cetera. We also look at building and construction. So once you really start building, how is water conservation and efficiency showing up in your building and plumbing codes? And then also post-occupancy. So traditionally, this is where environmental organizations spend the most time is, you know, once you've built it, how do you encourage less water use? How do you invest in the programming? It's deeply important work, and it also gets more expensive the farther down you go here. And so our goal is really that communities are thinking about each of these intervention points and really growing smart from the start. Our workshops have a major focus on breaking down these silos, as I've mentioned. So the setup is that we hold a two-and-a-half-day workshop. Each team from a community will have six to eight typically, sometimes a little more, officials from that community who attend. So we require that there's a land use planning and water resource management presence. Really love to see the public decision-making side, if possible, but it's not required. And then aside from that, we really defer to communities to, you know, who are the folks that you want to see in the room that you think are important for these conversations? Often that's Parks and Rec, economic development, if there are folks in your community who you feel like are really important to be part of that conversation. But there's a lot of deference to communities because you know yourselves best. And then going through the steps of the workshop itself. So as I mentioned, communities bring an interdisciplinary team. We then have a combination of plenary sessions where we have some experts, including our facilitator who really has 25 years of deep experience in this water-land use nexus, who leads conversations around some of these planning opportunities, case studies from around the state of what other communities are doing, and then peer-to-peer exchanges with other communities who are attending the workshop. Then there's a good number of strategic teamwork sessions. So a lot of the workshop is working with the community members or departmental officials who you brought to set goals, identify those opportunities, think about messaging. We know this can be a very technical and kind of jargon-filled world of land use planning, and so thinking about how the message is resonating with the broader community, and then ultimately establishing an action plan around water resilience steps. So thinking about 12 to 18 months ahead, what are opportunities that your organization can think about in that timeframe? I also wanted to share some alignment with the Santa Cruz AMA goals. So we really strive, especially to help fill in some capacity gaps with smaller, more rural communities that may be understaffed, helping to identify some of these ways to strategically reduce existing and new demand. We also are talking with Nogales Sonora about attending this workshop, and so there's major opportunity to deepen some of that bi-national collaboration. major opportunity to deepen some of that bi-national collaboration. And then, of course, thinking about ongoing development pressures. Hopefully, the workshop is a way to get ahead of those and make sure there's water smart growth happening from the start. And, you know, typically, our workshop is a state model. We'll have a workshop in Phoenix. Communities come from all over the state. We've found that really having a more regional focus leads to a lot of best practices that we might not see otherwise. We can really cater the curriculum to a smaller region. Those peer-to-peer exchanges with other communities are more valuable because they're really more so your neighbors. There are economies of scale that we can find. And I wanted to share an example of our San Luis Valley Regional Workshop that we held, which had several very small rural communities attend together in the San Luis Valley of Colorado. They came out of this workshop really feeling like they had separate planning processes around the export of water out of their region, but some people had no regulations. Some of them were written in really different ways. So identified at the workshop that they really wanted to have a shared discussion and planning framework around the export of water, which is only getting more scarce and more valuable from their region. This led to the first of its kind in Colorado, a joint planning area and joint planning board, where they're making decisions around any water exports out of the San Luis Valley together. Just wanted to go through a couple more examples. So Pima County attended the workshop and came out with this action plan goal around all forms of water being used wisely and strategically. One of their action plan steps was revising their zoning and associated landscape design manual to incorporate some stormwater harvesting, reducing some of the stress on their potable water sources, as well as native plants and some other more water-efficient practices. And they were able to get this passed unanimously a couple of years ago. And then one final example here, we had Evans, Colorado, was really interested in thinking about what reaching their water goals looks like on a year-to-year basis. It's easy to have lofty goals around conservation, but it can be harder to think about what that looks like on an annual basis. And so they created a tool that helps them identify those clear metrics, which for them is a reduction of water use 10% annually. This is, you know, just speaking to... The goal is that the workshop also brings you into a larger alumni network of communities all over Arizona, the Colorado River Basin more broadly, who are dealing with often very similar issues. So we really try to work smarter and not harder and allow people to compare notes. And next step, so we have an upcoming workshop that'll be held, it looks like in Tucson, March 23rd to 25th. So it's two-and-a-half days. We have the workshop itself is free. We do ask participants to cover travel, but we can provide most of the meals as well as lodging for any participants as needed. The next step would be to be thinking about what that interdisciplinary team of six to eight people looks like. Applications will be due December 5th for this workshop. And I have the link there and also a QR code here, and I will follow up with staff as well after this call to share those resources. So thanks very much.
Thank you.
I have a quick question.
Please.
So until now, how many counties or cities in Arizona are part of this Growing Water Smart program?
We've had 32 in Arizona.
Which one would be the closest to us as reference, like from Santa Cruz County?
Maybe La Paz County?
Okay.
Yeah.
Is Pima and Pima County?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, they've attended.
Right. I represent the county with a... It's called the Rural Water Working Group. Are you familiar with that group? Alexis Suzdorff, Chris Kuzdorff?
I'm not, actually.
Okay.
Yeah.
Maybe I can reach out and...
Yeah.
I mean, combining talents makes sense to me. I think you both have the same goals in mind. And even if it's just bouncing ideas off, you know, off of each other, I think that might be a step in the right direction for everybody.
Absolutely.
And thank you for all that you're doing.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for coming from Tucson.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to recess our general session and move into item G, public hearing.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We are now in our public hearing. Item one, amend the county comprehensive land use plan to change the designation on 5.59 acres of land in the Barrio de Tubac from medium-density residential to high-density residential, case number CP-25-01. Good afternoon, Mary.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I think that you should take these public hearings kind of concurrently because they are so intertwined. And so I would recommend that, and that is the way the commission handled them. And if it's okay, then I'll make just a brief presentation. I think maybe the developer would also want to make a brief presentation.
Absolutely.
And then, of course, we can take lots of public comment.
Okay. We'll go ahead and do it concurrently then.
Okay, okay.
Item one, two, and three at the same time then.
And I'll explain now the, kind of, the relationship.
Okay.
Between them all.
Thank you.
You did this just fine. Are you gonna teach me? Okay, so today, so thank you again, and good evening, and good evening, members of the public and county staff. The purpose of the cases that are before the commission, before the board this evening is basically to allow construction of 18 single-family attached homes in the Barrio de Tubac development in Tubac. And up the three bullets are the three cases that are before you and the subject of these public hearings. To achieve the goal of building these 18 single-family attached homes, there's a need for these three processes to go forward and to be undertaken. And additional processes, actually, provided these cases are approved today. So the three processes are, again, approving, revision to the county comprehensive land use plan on 5.59 acres. The second process, the second bullet up there, is to rezone 2.75 acres of those 5.59 acres for residential use. And the last process is to amend the planned area development document that was approved by the board in 2004, that has guided development in the Barrio de Tubac for these years. To amend that document in order to ensure consistency between the developers' plans and the public expectations in approved documents. So let us start with geographic... She left... Oh, there we go. Yay. So what this is, is obviously an aerial photo of the Tubac area. The background is the county comprehensive plan. This circle or oval shows basically the Barrio de Tubac area. When I pull up that little turquoise square, that's the village of Tubac. You have to watch kind of closely now because that little orange thing that came up is the community center, the North County facility. And then this orange that just lit up is the area that we're talking about this evening, the 5.59 acres of land within the Barrio de Tubac development. So as I mentioned, the first step in this process is amending the county comprehensive plan. This is a minor amendment due to what's being requested and the small area that it's being requested on. So the... In orange is the area, the 5.59 acres. It is currently designated medium-density residential in the county comprehensive plan. The proposal is to change that designation to high-density residential development on that 5.59 acres. That would allow the developer then to move forward with the rezoning application to residential. So that's the next one, the next case before you. As you can see, all of the red that's on this map is commercial zoning within the Tubac area. And you can see there's quite a bit of commercial zoning on either side of the interstate along the frontage roads, which is not unusual, but it's noteworthy. The... So the area that would be the subject of rezoning is not the entire 5.59 acres, but rather this smaller area, the seven... Or, I'm sorry, the 2.75 acres to multifamily, leaving 2.84 acres as general business zoning. So there still is some opportunity for some commercial uses along there. I would just note that the proposed multifamily zoning within that 2.75 is consistent with the zoning to the north, zoning to the east, zoning to the south is also... There is some multifamily zoning. And then the last case before you is that planned area development document that the board approved back in 2004. That document spells out the development standards for blocks two through eight of the Barrio de Tubac. This is the existing land use plan, and if the board approves the comprehensive plan amendment and the rezoning, then the developer will move forward with the additional 18 single-family attached residences, as I've described. There are a few other site development standards that are part of that planned area development that would also be modified, related to lot widths, some setbacks, and that sort of So again, this is what we're talking about. We're talking about three processes going forward in order to allow the developer to move forward with these 18 single-family residences. Amending the comprehensive land use plan, amending the zoning map, and amending the planned area development. If all of these are approved this evening, then the process doesn't end, but the developer does have to come in with subdivision plans. They would go to the planning commission and ultimately to the Board of Supervisors and then move into permitting. They've submitted a plan, a schedule, and you can see what that is, the planting going forward in '26, next year, with the potential then for construction in '27. This is the plan that they've submitted with these materials that shows the 18 single-family attached residences on that 2.75 acres within the Barrio de Tubac area. With that, then I will conclude by reminding you that the planning commission held public hearings on this issue, on these three issues, I should say, in late August, and at the conclusion of that meeting, they voted unanimously to recommend approval to you. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Questions, gentlemen?
I maybe jumped the gun on the... Well, I guess the public hearing is... We're in the public hearing, so.
I have a quick question, Mary.
Yeah.
So for these three different processes, what was the process for the community to provide feedback? I know you mentioned it a little bit, right? What was that process? How long did it take?
Well, what we did on the department level is, we did have a study session with the commission earlier in the summer to introduce this, because it is process-heavy, to introduce this to them, allow them to ask questions. And then in August, we again had a presentation of the three cases and the public hearing. Now, the developer, Mr. Brasher, has undertaken his own community outreach, and I'll leave it to him to describe because I think he does want to talk about what he's done, but he's done a lot of outreach in the community as well.
So there was a public hearing already?
Absolutely, yep.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Go ahead. That was one of the questions I had. And the other question was, you answered the planning and zoning. What was that vote? And you said unanimous.
Yes, it was unanimous for all three, and they too had to consider all three cases because they are separate actions, and it was unanimous, yes.
Okay. The question I do have, I was at the planning and zoning meeting, but unfortunately, I was not there during that portion of the event, or that meeting, excuse me. And maybe you remember, maybe you don't, maybe Mr. Brasher does. But why? Why was it unanimous? What were some of the comments that were made by the planning and zoning committee? Do you have any recollection on?
You know, I think some of the questions were the same as some of the questions you've asked. Because it is so kind of intertwined and a little complex, we had to work at making sure that they understood the process and the ultimate goal, which is these 18 homes. I might defer to Gary and Gary. That was a long meeting.
That's why I wasn't there.
Yeah, and I think some of the same folks who were at that entire meeting are here today, and maybe they can help too. But I don't remember a lot of detail to that, yeah.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Brasher?
Yeah, if you want to allude a little bit on your hearings?
You bet.
That you had?
You bet.
Before it went to the planning commission?
Absolutely, be happy to. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and of course, staff. My name is Gary Brasher. I'll be the developer of the proposed project that's before you today. Just a little bit of quick background, if I may. As Mary, Ms. Doll expressed, the property all along the frontage road there, along I-19, is all zoned for B2 commercial use. At the time, the Barrio de Tubac was originally planned. We came up with a master plan for the entire thing, again, which Ms. Doll referred to. And Gary Grisel will show you a map of that. For the most part, I think that development plan has been fulfilled pretty specifically to what we had in mind. However, over the years, those commercial parcels right on the interchange have been, I'll say to me, of concern because the kinds of users that came forward expressing interest in purchasing the property and developing it were things that you typically see on an interchange: fast-food establishments, storage locker centers, motels, you know, just a variety of uses which in and of themselves aren't bad. But I just, as I continued to think about the Barrio as a whole, I felt like those uses were just too intense. were just too intensive, that, that that wasn't the kind of entry that I wanted to see anyway into the greater residential area. So, what we tried to do is to kind of sit back and say, okay, let's see what the process is to downzone that to a, a more consistent zoning with what's already there, residential homes, you know, et cetera. So, that was kind of the background as to how we ended up coming forward to the county and, and the planning and zoning commission and asking for this accommodation and for this downzone. You know, I, I think, you know, again, those kinds of uses that are typical to interchanges are, are fine. I just don't think they're fine at that particular location. And so, that's why we've come before you. Gary Grisel will get up and make a brief presentation, and I'd like to just make a few other comments when we get to the right maps to, to kind of give you a little bit more background. As far as outreach, I had the opportunity to meet with the Bario to Tubac Master Committee, which, you know, talks about issues that affect the entire HOA for, for all the Bario. I met with them on a couple of occasions, had a chance to meet with the Santa Cruz Valley Citizens Council at one of their meetings back in March, met with their executive committee again, and I think that was in maybe July or first part of August, had an opportunity to do that. Have also met just individually with a number of people who've expressed either concerns or in some cases, support. So, I, I have tried to, you know, get out there and, and talk to as many people as possible. Like anything else, you're, you're never going to find, you know, 100% of, of people who want to do a particular thing, but, but I've tried to at least be, you know, to try to address concerns, et cetera. And, and I will have an update after Gary presents, because some of the input that we've received, we, we've actually implemented a few little changes that I, I think are at least responsive to some of the community concerns. So, we've been out there, had an opportunity to talk to a lot of folks about it, and, and we appreciate the time that you're committing tonight, so.
Mr. Brasher, having seen what, some of the things that have gone down here in Nogales with the two nicest neighborhoods, entrances having warehouses in front of them, you know, I can kind of empathize with your thought process.
Yeah.
And I, I, I agree with that.
Yeah.
Because
Thank you.
It's, it's an eyesore when you go into a, a beautiful neighborhood, and before you go into the neighborhood, you're going through, through warehouses, you know? And it's just unfortunately not great planning.
Yeah. Well, thank you. And that's, that was really the background. That's why I wanted to share that, is that as people enter the Bario to Tubac, we want them to, to see a softer entrance as opposed to something that might be a little bit more harsh and, and not complimentary to a lot of the resident, residential homes in the area, so.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions I can answer at this moment? If not, I'll hand it over to Mr. Grisel and...
I, I just have, I wanted to know what, some of the feedback that you received.
Sure.
Perhaps you can wait until afterward. Feedback that you received not only from the Bario in Tubac, but also the Citizens Council?
You bet.
If you recollect.
Yeah, I do. And, and most of the questions at the Citizens Council were general in nature. I mean, they were just, how many units? What kind of density is that? Some of them wanted to know, of course, what it's going to look like, which we are working with our architects now to develop those plans. But, but effectively, we want to make it a hacienda-style product. It's going to be one story, one car garage, 1,000 to maybe 1,200 square feet. So, these aren't going to be real big, you know, homes. A, a starting price point will probably be in the low 300,000 kind of range. So, those were some of the questions, I think, that were generally asked. To kind of drill down though, as I started meeting with more individuals, some of the, some of the points that came up, which were good ones, were there was a concern that this might become a heavily rental, you know, community. We had originally talked about, excuse me, having a, a maximum that you had to rent for at least a seven-day period, you know, not overnight, not weekends, that kind of thing. But based on community input, we've decided just unilaterally to raise that to 21 days in hopes that that would, you know, alleviate some of the concern and some of the possibility that that could even happen. So, I, I think that was one thing. I know there's been, you know, some concern that we're, we're taking what's now a desert property and, and we're developing it. And that will be a change, and there's no question about it. Development does require change, and there'll be trees removed and trees brought in, and those are some of the kind of things that just will happen. But we'll be as sensitive as we can to the, to the vegetation that's there. Another concern that came up had to do with construction time, that, you know, you, you might start off and it could take, you know, years, and people would have to be, you know, kind of living through the construction process for a long period of time. And of course, we can't necessarily dictate, of course, the economy or what's going to happen. But one of the things I wanted to clarify is that these units or these dwellings are built in two-unit clusters, which you briefly saw, and Gary will talk about a little bit further. And one of the things I mentioned, and I didn't probably clarify it well enough, we want to make a distinction in this development, because in, in another development in the Bario called Sentinel Hill, those were also designed in two-unit clusters, as you went through. Every design was as two units, and then you went to the next two units. And the builder at that time decided that he would build them, if, if somebody bought one unit, he'd build one unit. And the partner to that unit wasn't constructed at that time. And I think, that was fine, but I mean, I think in the long-term planning, that was a mistake. Because I think now, those infill lots are under construction, and so people who've been in residence for many times, eight, 10 years, now suddenly have a home being built right next to them, attaching to their wall. And that, you know, can be a little disconcerting. So, we're going to be building the clusters in twos. You know, we're not going to do a half, we're not going to do onesies or anything of that nature. We're going to do them two at a time. But, but we'll probably start off with maybe, you know, four to six, and then as sales take place, build another four to six and, and hopefully move through the, the rest of the project in fairly short order. But that was another concern I know that came up, so. I think those are kind of the main things that stuck with me.
Okay. Last, last question for now. Was, what was the end result? Was there any decision that was made by the Bario and the Citizens Council? Did they say no, yes, or was that not even part of the discussion?
They, I mean, they, they didn't take a formal vote.
Okay.
They just were supportive and said, you know, it sounds good. I think one of the members of the planning and zoning commission is a member of the Citizens Council, and I think based on those conversations, he was supportive and voted in favor of it. I know at our, at our local Bario to Tubac HOA group, we're supportive of it. So, you know, as we went through, again, not to say everybody is, which we'll probably hear some from, but, but for the most part, I think the, the outreach was, was accepted and, and had some good questions and issues brought up.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. My name's Gary Grisel. I'm with the WLB group. We do have a slideshow. So, this is the overall master plan that Gary had mentioned too earlier. This was done when the original PAD and earlier was developed. And the homes have developed along those lines, and it's been a success. Now that we are moving forward, we're going into this process that, as Mary mentioned earlier, it's, it's quite complicated. There's three separate processes that we're going through, and we're doing them individually. We have the minor comprehensive plan amendment, the rezoning, and the PAD, the planned area development. What I want to do tonight is, is kind of go through those, so you have a better understanding of where those lie and, and what those are all about. A general location, I think everyone now, after Mary's presentation, we understand where this is located. What I tried to do here on this map is overlay the three processes onto a map so that you can see it. So, the first item is the comprehensive plan amendment, and it is outlined in blue, dashed, and is the 5.59 acres. And then the area that we're rezoning is the, down in the corner that has more of the green tent, that's where our development is. That's what our whole goal here is, to get to developing this portion, and we have to go through this whole process just to get to this section right here. There's also a, a red dash line going around blocks two through eight, and that is what the existing planned area development is. So, now you kind of have an idea of where these all lie in terms of the placement and, and what we're planning to do here. So, our goal here is to develop the 18 units. So, they're attached dwelling units, they're about 1,000 square foot, plus or minus, they have a carport, I mean, a, a garage, and then there's the driveway for it. They have a back patio. They're all single-story, no two stories. Around the middle, you can see the loop road going around, we've kind of developed a gathering area, and this is a place for these neighbors to kind of come out, we'll do some kind of seating area out there or something, that, you know, they can develop friendships with their neighbors out in this front area. Another thing that's, so, in terms of parking, you have one that's in the garage, and you're able to park one on your driveway. But then we're also providing additional parking spaces within the development. We are planning for a, a walking path around the development, and it's kind of lightly shown going around the edge. One of the things we want to do here, we are sensitive to the vegetation. Around the edges, we're trying to preserve as much of the existing vegetation as we can. The plants that we're going to be putting back in are going to be drought-tolerant native plants that are characteristic of the area. This, one thing we're going to talk about is residences per acre rack. This development right here is coming out at 6.5 residences per acre, and this is 2.75 acres. And I'll talk a little bit more about that when we get into the different processes. We'll go to the next slide. So, our first process is the comprehensive plan amendment. As Mary mentioned, it is medium-density residential right now. We're proposing to change the 5.59 acres to high-density. You might ask why we are changing the 5.59 acres and not just changing the 2.74. What we're doing is, and I'll show you on a different slide here, the, when you go from medium-density residential to high-density residential, the difference is the residences per acre. And in the high-density, it allows multifamily. So, in the medium-density, there's three residences per acre allowed. But when you go into the high-density, it allows for 10 residences per acre. Now, one of the things that, the reasons that we are wanting to change the 5.59 to high-density is, in the future, you know, it will allow multifamily in that. Right now, let's say that this project is successful, our ultimate goal, if this is successful, would be to come back before you and rezone that section to multifamily. The comprehensive plan would already be in place. There's, and it does not affect the existing zoning. B2 is allowed in medium-density and in the high-density, so it doesn't really affect the underlying zoning. It just allows us to come in with the multifamily in the future if it is a successful project. And we're hoping it is. So, one other thing, in the comprehensive plan, there's a hierarchy of land uses, and going from medium-density to high-density is just only one more intense level up. It's, it's still in the same classification as urban, and we're not jumping, you know, several steps by doing this. The other process is to rezone from B2 to MF. This is considered a downzoning. As he mentioned, Gary mentioned earlier, B2 allows for many uses, and he mentioned some of the uses that have approached him for this piece. And what we're trying to do here is to make this site compatible with the surrounding neighborhoods. We feel residential is more compatible than some of the B2 uses that have been brought to his attention. So, when you come into the site, you know, you're, instead of having a B2 intense use, you're going to have these dwelling units that are going to have vegetation around them. You've, you saw the site plan, try to preserve as much vegetation on the edges. So, I believe that going to this multifamily from the B2 is, is a positive thing, and it's more compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. Last item of this process is the PAD amendment. As you can see here, this was the original map, and it's blocks two through eight. And so, we're, we're amending this to come in line with the comprehensive plan and the rezoning that we're proposing. One thing I want to point out here, we talked about residences per acre. So, moving from medium-density to high-density, we're going from three residences to 10. So, that allows us, if you approve it, to go to 10 residences. Our project proposed is at 6.5. With our PAD, we are writing in there, we are going to limit the residences per acre to seven residences per acre. So, we're not going to take the 10 that's allowed under the comprehensive. The PAD will limit it to seven. I think that's an important part. So, that concludes the presentation, and if you have any questions?
Can you go back to the, the big drawing of, of the, the, keep on going back, I'll tell you when. You mentioned there's extra parking, but I didn't see any on the...
Okay.
Yeah, if you want to keep on going back.
Yep. Right there. Yep. Okay, so, there are four spaces.
Oh, I see them right there.
If you, between units one and two, and 18 and 17, and then there's a couple of units in the center at the gathering area.
Okay. Thank you. I, I just didn't see that at that point.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, sir.
Questions?
Quick question. Were you part of the, of the developers that developed the original Bario?
No, I was not.
At this time, I, I'll go ahead and ask the speakers to come up one by one. I'll call you up. Larry?
I appreciate your time and your interest in this. I'm the owner of the property at 145 Calle Frida Calo. It's on the corner of Basio to a Coquary and Calle Frida Calo. It's directly across the street from the development you see up there. You can see it up in the upper right corner of the drawing if you take a look at. So, as far as outreach, I have a long statement I, I could make. I've given copies to the clerk of the board for the board, and so I'll try to slow it down there. As far as community outreach, nobody from the developer ever reached out to me or any of the neighbors I'm, I'm aware of in my neighborhood. I saw some information about the planning commission, but didn't have any information about the plans, you know, the drawings, you know, the proposals in any detail at that And the presence of, of that many units, that close together with that much traffic and, and the number of occupants is going to really affect the peace and, and comfort of our neighborhood. And there'd be excessive noise, inconvenience, significantly increased traffic, and the construction noise for, as I understand it, talking to other people who've talked about the program, at least three years of almost continuous construction, assuming that they can sell these units. So, that makes it real difficult to, to live. So that makes it real difficult to live right across the street from it. I've been next to property construction before. And six months to a year is disturbing, but three years is just going to be very difficult. They have 18 units in a very small area. It looks like the lots are going to be much more than 1,000 square feet each. I don't have the measurements, but it looks that way. It'll affect the park across the way because the outlet is going to, is pointed exactly towards the park that's directly across the street. And cars will be going in and out of there and affecting users of the park and that area. There's no access directly from the funny road, which is a public road rather than the private roads within the barrio. And that would seem to be a better way if this does happen, that the frontage road be used as the major access. Running through the barrio and increasing the traffic in the area that's there already would be, create quite a bit of difficulty for the residents. And I know other residents in the same area where I'm in would find the traffic oppressive. I didn't know that they were going to plan single-story units. So my third paragraph, I'll just go further. It appeared from the documentation I got that the rental of these units was limited to one week a month rather than one week or more a month. That seems different from what I understand from the documents that are part of the agenda items. Enforcing any restriction on renting is going to be very difficult. HOAs have a hard time to do it. I'm a retired attorney and I know that HOAs have great deal of difficulty enforcing rental restrictions and that sort of thing. And it's unlikely that county is going to go in and enforce rental restrictions if that gets to be an issue. We've talked about the build-out period. It's over three years if they continuously build units. And most of that is, are going to be in the front yard, particularly on Caye Friticalo. Not only my own, but the other homes in that area. And things are disturbing, heavy equipment and other negative opportunities. I've lived next to one area that was being developed right behind the house where I lived. And all of the displaced wildlife came into the subdivision that I lived in as a result of the development activity that was there. And there's a little surprise. The applications on the comprehensive plan beyond the tiny home development, that's what I call it, is unaddressed by the developer and the staff. The, if the plan amendment is approved as proposed, the remainder of the 5.59 acres would be able to be built as high-density residential, similar to exactly what's being proposed for the zoning revision, which means that it'll allow the same sort of density and issues that I've outlined before.
Mr. Close?
Yes.
Your three minutes are up, sir.
Okay.
And.
But that's the surprise. And the rest of my comments you can read, and so I won't, I won't take your time doing that. I will say that I practiced law for 37 years. Almost all of that was with public agencies. I was the city attorney of five cities in two different cities, two different states. I represented a large major school district and another nonprofit. And as far as the development restrictions and the comprehensive plan amendments and that, and that kind of thing, those things are a covenant with the people who have already lived there. And so to make changes of this nature so late in the process, after most of the planning and development has occurred, really is disturbing and seems to be inconsistent with the way the existing residents ought to be treated. And that's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your service, by the way, sir.
Patricia?
Patricia Gluckowski, Tubac, Arizona. The postings of the notices were low to the ground with small print, requiring people to kneel down to see them and necessitated taking pictures with their phones and then enlarging them in order to read. These postings were placed in spots which were not safe. One up on a steep grade of rocks requiring residents to climb the rocks to read it. The other right at the stop sign at the corner, requiring people to stop at this unsafe spot to once again kneel down and take photos. With this safety concern, Mr. Brasher did help to correct. The other issue is the one that only residents within 300 feet of the proposed rezoning were sent letters, which I told, which I was told was the required distance. There are many homes directly around the park and close areas of three HOAs who could have been included in respect and consideration of the residents of our barrio. Although these procedures might have followed the county requirements in a small closely knit community, which we have in the barrio, it seemed to lack the transparency and the communication for all to be aware. If approved, the developers will clear 2.75 acres of natural terrain for a phased construction plan for 18 common wall dwellings. Once the first two dwell, this is what I thought was the original plan. Once the first two dwellings are sold, construction then will start on the next two dwellings and then continues in intervals of two dwellings at a time until all 18 are built and sold with no predictable end time. The phased construction creates a disruptive, possibly hazardous zone for the barrio, including the Anza Park continuing for indefinite duration. The porta potties and large dumpsters, which are common for construction sites, create a blight. This especially as it is across from our park, where people go for meditation, seeking a spiritual silent spot close by the fountain, while others use this park for social gatherings. The ongoing noise for the extended time of the project will take away from the character of the park as well as the relaxation feature of the homes which were bought in seeking quiet as their reason for living in this area. Also, it's anticipated the short stay allows investors or owners to offer dwellings as vacation rentals and sets up a motel-like situation. Now Gary addressed some of these. And so are there any restrictions or assurances that can be given for the ending of this construction? Two, are there adjustments to place the porta potties and dumpsters so their unsightly appearances are not visible from our park? And three, can revisions be assured for longer stays in these rentals? I thought, from what I heard, that the longer stay was agreed to 27 days. And Gary said 21 days today. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sue?
Good evening and thank you. My name is Sue Laverdy and I live at 228 Market Circle in the Barrio de Tubac. Couple of things I wanted to address as well was the community outreach. We had at our annual homeowners meeting in January, Mr. Brasher presented to all the homeowners within the barrio who attended that meeting either by Zoom or in person. It was also presented at a public meeting for the citizens council as well as the others that he had mentioned. The planning commission had a study meeting when it was noticed to the public. We attended that. We attended the actual planning commission meeting and now we're here tonight. I'm speaking in support and in favor of that three action items that you have before you, four, five, and six, before you regarding the amending the comprehensive plan of the 5.59 acres, as well as the rezoning of the 2.75 acres and the amendment to the PAD, allowing 18 attached dwelling units within the barrio. As a resident in the barrio, there is much more in keeping with the current development that's there than allowing it to be B2. After attending last time's planning commission meeting, I really had my eyes open to what B2 zoning really means. And I really do not want to see that happen in my neighborhood. So I really implore you to, you know, change the, you know, the request so we have residential units there and eliminate the B2. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
Thank you.
Next, we have Keith Laverdy.
Thank you for your time and allowing us to speak. We appreciate that. My name is Keith Laverdy and I live at 228 Market Circle in Trailshead. We bought land there in 2010 and have been full-time homeowners there for about 10 years. I am currently the co-chair of the Master HOA Association and the chair of the Trailshead Subdivision Association. So I think I could call myself a concerned citizen. And I have what I feel is a wide range of interest in what's best for the barrio. There is no doubt that rezoning this to residential is a much better outcome for all than some of the options in B2. I don't think that that's any, anything that anybody can really debate about. We have another property that has very, very dense living quarters in Barcadero. And just briefly on the construction aspect, nobody wants to be around construction. But there is currently three subdivisions in the barrio that have construction going and have had on and off for the last few years. It's currently picked up some, which is a good thing for the residents because we would like to be on our own at some point in the future. But the fact that it's 18 units is not going to have the traffic impact that the 48 units that were built in the last few years and the Embarcadero had. And they don't remember any public outcry about that. I think to some degree this is a location situation and that's human nature and I understand that. But I think that all three of these amendments need to be approved tonight. And I think that this is a much better answer for the barrio as a whole than a B, a business zoning. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to come up? Yes, sir. Please state your name for the record. At the microphone, please. Thank you. Thank you, Robert.
Thank you very much. Robert Moore, I reside in Tubac, 13th Circuit, Diego Rivera.
Yes, sir.
I think one of the things that I'm, then really I was rather moved here and I forgot about people like you that are truly impacted by that. I walk right around that little curve almost every morning. And that needs to be heard and understood. I have the great honor and privilege of living in Celito Lindo. And I thank Gary so much for the role that he played in all that. And we all knew at some point that piece of real estate across the way, something was going to happen. And I sure would rather see this project than some hotel or storage facility. However, we really, really need to be conscious of how we're going to be impacting that community. And maybe I just, maybe I just like the park. I like to be able to look at the mountains and all this and that. But you're talking about three years or so of some serious work. And I understand, construction, yeah, I got it. It's going on all over the place. I've been there for 20 years, 21 years, 21 years. We have people coming in and out of our little, beautiful little development. It is a beautiful little neighborhood. But people just drive through, run through there. It's, it's home to everybody. And what's going to be going on over there with this development over time? And the staging of it and all the activities and the traffic, I, it's just, it's just something I think that we just need to keep in mind. Because again, people are going to be affected. People like yourself are going to be affected. And that, I find that somewhat troubling. And I, and maybe like everyone else, oh, it's been actually just keep things where they are. No, I understand, things are going to change. We always expected some change. But again, with all the cars that we've come, got going through there right now, all the, all the dogs at the park, all the activities with the dogs and everything else at the park, all of a sudden now you're going to have this development across the way. And all these renters are going to be coming in. I'm sure they've all had their pets with them, more activity at the park. Again, just if we could just maybe keep some of these things in mind, the noise, the traffic, and that'd be great. That's about all I have to say.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Okay, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn public hearing and move back into regular session.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. I'll go ahead and move on to item four, five, and six. Item four, discussion possible action to approve resolution number 2025-11, case number CP-2501, for a minor comprehensive plan amendment to change the classification of 5.59 acres in the Barrio de Tubac development from medium density residential to high-density residential. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion.
So moved.
Taken.
There are motion to approve, a second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
And this pertains to all three items, if they're passed. I certainly feel for the folks that are going to be affected. Backstory, my grandparents moved to Green Valley in 1969. We moved in 1979 and it was small. It's grown. And when I get off the freeway like I did today at Duval Mine and I see those two huge ISOR storage units, it's, it's, it's a bit frustrating and I understand growth is inevitable. I understand that. But when I, when I ran for this position, I ran on when we, when anything regarding growth was discussed, I said three things, organized, responsible, and planned out. In my opinion, and I certainly agree with, I would hate to see my, my in-laws have lived in, my mother-in-law has lived in Tuma Cockery since she was born. And it's a beautiful area. And I'd much, much rather see residential than a big O or storage units. So I understand, you know, everyone's comments tonight. If this is voted yes, I will ask both of you gentlemen to listen to what was said tonight and do whatever is necessary and can be done to alleviate some of the concerns that were mentioned tonight. Thank you.
No, I, I agree with Supervisor Fanning. And I just have a quick question. So I know that you explained that, Mr. Brasher, that this project would take like two at a time, right? But do you have a timeframe? Do you think it's going to be like three years or less or?
And again, my apologies for not being more clear. So kind of two issues. When we build those units that you saw, they're, they're in pairs. They're together. So we will build them together. We won't build one side. Thank you for the question Supervisor Davis. The units are built in pairs. So two things going on. When we build two units, we won't just build one half of it and then the other half later when it sells. So they will be built in twos. But on the second level. But on the second level, how many are we going to build at one time? Four to six at one time. So the goal would be to build six, six and six be done. Our goal would be to be in and out of there in two years. Obviously, the economy can be what it is, but that's our goal.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And what I would ask that if this is passed tonight, find a way, maybe it's not one of you two folks, but someone within the organization. Please make sure that you're accessible and available.
Oh, sure.
And I, and I, I assume, you know, that's not going to be an issue here, but if, if it is approved, please make yourself accessible to those who have some concerns.
Yeah, happily. And we've had the opportunity to meet with a lot of them. We'll continue to, to have, answer questions.
I, I personally have had a lot of conversations with our county manager when he was Public Works Director and, and he knows I'm big on smart growth. I, I always preach it with him. And, and, and as my colleague, both my colleagues mentioned, it's smart. It's smart vision and I hate to see what went on in Vista del Cielo and, and Meadow Hills. It's unfortunate. And I thank everyone that came tonight. I know you took time off and it, it's getting kind of late and all. But we, we appreciate all your input. I thank Mary, our Planning and Zoning Committee, because they did their due diligence as well. It was unanimous. And I personally have a lot of respect for our, our planning and zoning and, and for your projects. You know, through the years, I've seen all the projects and I've voted for your projects and, and I commend you for your professionalism and, and continued professionalism. And like my colleague said, let's listen to the people and, and have dialogue, open dialogue, please. And that's all I have. With that said, any other discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose. Motion carries. We'll now go on to item five, discussion possible action to approve ordinance number 2025-03, case number REZ-25-01, rezoning 2.5, 2.75 acres of land in the Barrio at Tubac, development from B2 general business to MF multifamily. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All oppose. Motion carries unanimously. Item six, discussion possible action to approve amendment to the Barrio at Tubac, Planned Area Development Case Number PAD-25-01 Guidelines. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All oppose. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you all. I'll go ahead and move up to item one, discussion possible action to approve and adopt proclamations declaring a November 4th through November 11th, 2025, Operation Green Light for Veterans. NACO, I believe, started this.
Yes.
And it's amazing. It's great and we want to make sure we get those green light bulbs out there, Mr. Manager.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. Proclamation, Operation Green Light for Veterans, November 4th through November 11th, 2025. Whereas the residents of Santa Cruz County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have self, selflessly served our country and this community in the armed forces and whereas the contributions and sacrifices of those who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas Santa Cruz County seeks to honor individuals who have made countless sacrifices for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as county veteran service officers in 29 states to help fellow former service members access more than $52 billion in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year. And whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually and an estimated 20% increase of service members will transition in civilian life in the future. And whereas studies indicate that 44 to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life. And whereas active military service members transitioning from military service are at a high risk for suicide during their first year after military service. And whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for veterans. And whereas Santa Cruz County appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted. Now therefore be it resolved with designation as a Green Light for Veterans County, Santa Cruz County Board of Supervisors hereby declares November 4th through the 11th, 2025 as a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifices of those transitioning from active service. And be it further resolved that in observance of Operation Green Light, Santa Cruz County will display green lights at the county complex and at the 1904 historic courthouse. And be it further resolved that Santa Cruz County encourages its citizens in patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying green lights in a window of their place of business or residence from November 4th through the 11th, 2025, passed and adopted this 15th day of October, 2025.
Thank you, sir. We'll, we'll go ahead and do items A and B together. Item B is October 23rd through 25th, 2025, as ANSA, 250 days in Santa Cruz County. I will be honored to read the proclamation. Proclamation of the Board of Supervisors of Santa Cruz County, Arizona, in declaring ANSA 250 days from October 23rd through 25th, 2025. Whereas in 1771, an expedition comprised of 30 soldiers with their families and about 240 settlers, including men, women, and at least 100 children, along with thousand, a thousand head of livestock embarked on an epic 1,200 mile journey that began deep in modern day Mexico, in the communities of Culiacan and Orcasitas. And traversed modern day Arizona and California and resulted in the establishment of the Presidio at San Francisco and the settlement, settling of Bay Area by colonization, new Spaniards, colonizing new Spaniards. And whereas this expedition was led by Lieutenant Colonel Juan Baptista de Anza II, who also served as commander of the Presidio San Ignacio at Tubac. And whereas the expedition used pathways forged over millions, millennia by the indigenous people all along the expedition route. The people's descendants were instrumental in ensuring safe passage and for the settlers, even though the, the adverse impacts of colonization had already been experienced. And whereas the pivotal event in the history of what became the American Southwest continues to resonate through time adding immeasurable to, immeasurably to the richness and diversity of our region's heritage, culture, and lifeways. And whereas this year of 2025 marks the 250th anniversary of ANSA's expedition. And whereas the community of Tubac and all the southern Arizona have long recognized the importance of the expedition in shaping our region. Now therefore, we do hereby proclaim October 23rd to 25th, 2025 to be ANSA 250 days in Santa Cruz County. And be it further proclaimed that we call upon all to observe, celebrate, and honor the event by educating others about the expedition and the legacy of determination, sacrifice, joy, and discovery that its stories teach us all, as well as thoughtfully recognizing the acknowledgement, the long-term impacts and the colonization has had on indigenous communities. And by this proclamation, we celebrate the expedition, honor the memory of the colonists and soldiers, and gratefully acknowledge the contributions of indigenous communities along the route through their ancestral lands. Passed and adopted this 15th day of October, 2025, Luis Carlos Davis, member, John Fanning, Vice Chairman, and yours truly Chairman. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to, to approve.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All oppose. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mary, did you put that together?
I'm really sorry about that first time.
No, but it's amazing history.
Yes.
It's amazing history. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, item two, discussion possible action to approve a letter of support for Unisource Energy Services Santa Cruz Reliability Project North Project. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
No, I'm just very happy that they listened to the folks that it most affected and the decision was made accordingly.
And I believe this will eventually provide redundancy or a greater force of energy?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All oppose. Motion carries unanimously. Item three, discussion possible action to approve a letter of support of the House, a letter of support, I'm sorry, approve a letter to Speaker of the House Mike Johnson requesting the immediate swearing in of Congresswoman-elect Alita Grijalva to ensure representation for Santa Cruz County. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Move.
Second.
Motion and a second. And, and, and just so you know, we haven't had that vote for over a year, I believe. Cause Mr. Grijalva was ill for a while and he couldn't vote. So I think that vote is critical for Arizona. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All oppose. Motion carries. Okay, item seven. Discussion possible action to approve resolution number 2025-12 for the participation in the Arizona Commerce Authority Film Ready Communities, FRC program and sponsorship to the program in the annual amount of $2,000. Mr. Davis, thank you for doing that, by the way, and thank you for your involvement.
You're welcome.
Any words on?
Yeah, so I think about a month ago, Mr. Chavez and myself met with Matthew Earl Jones. So he's the Director of the Arizona Commerce Authority for Film and Digital Media Program. And the idea is to put Santa Cruz County in a category called Film Ready to try to attract film industry come to, to Santa Cruz County. And with that, like the, the idea is to attract big, big productions so they can span in hotels, restaurants, but after the film is ready to put Santa Cruz on the map, it would be like a good marketing tool. And, and that's just a way to bring industry. And, and I support this not because I, only my film background. I, I think it would bring a lot of film industry, just like everybody knows that Hangover was filmed, Downtown New Galles, there's a bench there. There's been a lot of films that have been shot in, in Arizona throughout the years. And I would like to bring with the help of the county and everybody involved, like more film industry coming this way. And also be able to like, there's like this effort between like Son, Arizona and Sonora as well. So yeah, I think it would be a great thing to, to start moving that direction.
And Mr. Jones's brother was the famous?
Yeah, for the Darth Vader.
Yeah, James Earl Jones.
James Earl Jones's brother.
Yeah, and, and even like, like just the timing is correct. Yesterday, the county manager and myself, we went to go to the, the set for the new movie that are, this Hollywood movie called Coyote. So they shot one day in New Galles, Arizona. Now they're shooting across in, in Mexico for 10 days, I believe. So Mel Gibson will be part of this movie, Chich Marin. And it, it just, it was, the timing couldn't be perfect for this.
Thank you. Thank you for doing that.
There was supposed to be a picture, but I don't know what happened back there.
And thank you for taking us today. That was a great experience.
So, so yeah, it, it just shows how it was like a Mexican crew and, and American crew involved in this production. And I think that's the way that, like part of my district is right at the border, like just when, how I met with, with a Mexican mayor. We've got to start thinking that way and see how we can collaborate.
Go ahead, sir.
I just want to say thank you for your hard work. This would not have been possible without your dedication and your work ethic. So thank you.
And, and, and again, once again, the amazing thing about being at that set is the, the way it was inviting, you know, where, where people bring you in like part of their family. The producer said, you know what? I live in, in Santa Fe, New Mexico. And I called my wife today and I said, I want to buy a house here. You know, they love our culture. They love our food, our weather, you know. It, it, it was good to see. It was good to see. Thank you, Shannon.
So yeah, so.
Who's Chich?
Wasn't your question?
It's the guy on the left with the bald head. Okay, we, I believe, do we have a motion?
No, we do not.
Okay. You want to give us a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All oppose. Motion carries. Okay, consent agenda, item one through 10. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion, please.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All oppose. Motion carries. I believe that's all the people's business. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.